... March 31st at 7:00 PM. Let's go over to the consent agenda. Under the Department of Community and Economic Development is funding support for the Country Music Fest, up to $17,175 from the FY '16 Public Funding News Budget. Any questions on that item?
So that'd be in addition to next year's budget, not the current year's.
Under Parks and Engineering, we have street box improvements.
This is for the Franklin Street project, part of the list of projects we had for that block.
We also have the basement doors and public right-of-way contract, which is, I think, a CDBG project, funded project, is that right?
CD for replacement, non-CD for new.
Okay.
And Rodney, just clarify the location, if you would, for where those projects will occur.
Basically within block up here, first block of East and West Washington, first block of East and West Franklin, couple of them.
Any questions on that? Also, item number three, Parks and Engineering, the golf course mowing contract, third year of a three-year contract, $16,500. Any questions on that? Item four, Parks and Engineering, mowing and trimming in various parks, same contractor, third year of a three-year contract, $71,504.52. Any questions on that? All right, in the Department of Utilities, Water Department, we have a vertical pump assembly, $51,174. Any questions on that item? We also have a hardware and parts for the Wilson SCADA system, $55,818.84. Any questions on that one? Wastewater has a 2015 four-wheel-drive service vehicle to replace unit number 526, $85,387. Any questions on that item? Under the Police Department, we have predictive policing software subscription, $15,000. Any questions on that? We also have tasers and taser cartridges, $15,395.
Mr. Mayor, on the tasers, the cartridges, and then excellent ammunition for patrol, I am assuming, but it doesn't say, I'm assuming sole source because they're piggyback contracts or I'm trying to figure out why they're sole-source contracts. I understand for the software, but I'm assuming unless they're piggybacked.
Taser sole-source?
Yeah, and same with the ammunition.
Yeah, the taser sole-source.
Welcome to the table, Chief.
Yeah, the taser sole-source because there's one vendor that sells those. The ammunition is a contract price, it's like state contract.
That's what I was assuming, Chief, I just wasn't sure because it didn't say one was sole-source.
And the ammunition's actually coming in from next year's budget, we just need to order it now.
No problem at all.
Because it has about 18 months backlog.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on those HPD items? All right, we have no unfinished business, and under New Business, we have the introduction of an ordinance, amendments to Chapter 216, street cuts, which we're going to be talking more about tonight, approval of a purchase of Ladder Truck One, and I believe our clerk has just distributed some information on that, so if you want to take a minute and look over that, if you have any questions, let us know.
Yeah, and this information just came out from the Fire Department. The recommended vendor is Atlantic Emergency Solutions, representing Pierce Manufacturing.
Looks a bit of a discount.
Shows the three proposals, but the $1,099,000 figure is reduced for some prepay options. Chief mentions that in the paragraph right below the numbers, so the final price recommendation, The funding for this, $1 million in bond funds, $150,000 in anticipated funding support from the volunteer company, so we believe we're in, within budget. We just got this information, too, this afternoon, so if there's anything that comes up in terms of our confirming things with the Fire Department, we'll have time next week to clarify that. But this has been a scheduled purchase, one we've discussed previously with the council and anticipated, and this is a recommendation.
Any questions on that right now? Item C under New Business, the city engineer has advised me he would like to remove that item. The project has come in over budget, and he wants to do some more work on that particular item before we bring it back. So we may have a special session sometime in March to reconsider that, but for now...
We can do that.
That's right. Anything else on the preliminary agenda? All right. Our first, our next item is a request for funding for art from the Washington County Library. You all have a copy of a letter that was sent to me, actually, I think it was hand-delivered to me by Dave Hanlon, and they are requesting $5,000, I believe, for the vast relief that will portray Hagerstown's transportation history and heritage. I guess my only question is, if the council so desires to make this contribution, do we have a potential source of funds?
Well, Michelle and I talked about that, we'd recommend if you do the 5,000, it come from general fund contingency. Each year we do budget a small amount in contingency funds for unanticipated expenses, so that we would incorporate this expense within the current year's general fund budget.
Is there any objection to that method of funding? I think it is a good gesture for us to support, we've been supportive of public art in the past, and I think this would be another step in that process.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion, and I've suggested it informally a number of times, that we request that the library work with us to put a peaceful but obvious sign in the checkout lobby, pointing to downtown, downtown attractions, downtown Hagerstown. A lot of people come in from the back, they don't know where they are. When you're at the checkout counter, you go left, you go to those doors, and it goes out. I think there needs to be something there that says that this exit goes to downtown Hagerstown or central-city Hagerstown, where some, I'm willing to, you know, staff could work with them, you have some kind of permanent identification in that area.
I think that's a good idea.
I think a lot of people come in, they don't know where they are, that big library, now they come in from the back, that parking lot, so just to put the idea in people's heads that, you know, there's restaurants and other things.
Arts and Entertainment District is out that door?
Right, well, whatever, but I think it needs to be identified that that's where that goes. You line up, you don't necessarily look out, and if you come in from the back, and you come in from the suburbs, you may not quite realize where you are.
My understanding is this will be in the library, this art?
It'll be in the, at the entrance in the back of the library, in the, along, on the wall there.
I have a couple of comments. One, I would prefer this be discussed with the budget, that we have budget time coming up. At that time, we will know what general fund contingency funds we still have and can decide where to put it. Two, I hope to be sounding like a broken record, I started last year and I plan to continue. This is the Washington County Library, I want to know how many of the municipalities are contributing to this. When we talk about public art, and I am a firm believer in public art and will support it to the end, but to me, the city's contribution to public art, I don't see in the library. I see it on our public streets, I see it in our public parks, and I would be willing to match whatever other contributions municipalities make. But if the city of Hagerstown is the only one municipality being asked or willing to make a contribution, I would not agree to it for this project, and I, again, would think that it shouldn't be discussed until budget time.
I can only anticipate the argument in response to that would be, well, this is the, their flagship institution is located in downtown Hagerstown, and that's why they're, I don't know if they have, I don't know the answer to your question, if they have other municipalities making contributions. I would only anticipate that that would be their A response to that.
And it's an appropriate response, and Mayor, if money, if we weren't having every discussion every time we bring up money about taxes and about how tight things are, I wouldn't be saying this at all. I'm the first guy who's always supported funding everything.
Right.
And I'm not saying I wouldn't support funding this, but I'd like to see at the end of this fiscal year where we stand, and if in fact we have general fund contingency money left, I may be the first guy in the world, it's right now, it's almost the end of February, we're talking about April, essentially, so I'm not saying no to it, but I would like to see where we stand fiscally at the end of this year, and again, I'd like to see public art a lot more out in the public instead of where this is.
Mr. Muntzer.
I think Lou makes a good point, but one of the things I'd like to know is whether or not the library made an effort to contribute to the Bear City Park, I don't know if they raised any money or not. I think maybe we could, we should, or at least I'll suggest this, have somebody from the library come to a future meeting and talk about this a little more detail.
Okay.
I have one question. That pot, Michelle, is that the pot that the nonprofits that were looking at, that there's so much money left that can be, and there's not a lot? Is that what we're looking at, that pot of money?
I think what Bruce is mentioning with the overall, when we looked at, if we do it right now in current fiscal year '15, there's not a whole lot left there in that general fund agency contributions for unspecified.
Correct.
So what we did was we went back and took a look at the end of fiscal year '15, sorry, we put some monies in for an overall contingency, for things like payouts for employees who leave, recruitment for city administrator search, we did lump-sum contingencies for both workers' comp and some salary information for unsettled union contracts.
So we're not talking about, I think the, to get to her point, we're not talking about the agency, unallocated agency contribution?
Right, which is still would be, I mean, that would fall.
That's a very small amount, right.
Correct, but now we're talking about another pot here, okay? So with that other pot of money, now it's a matter of seeing what then we've got left in that pot to be able to play with.
Have, has the city, or is there a plan to have a public art line item maybe in the budget? I mean, is that something we need to consider for the future, since this is a, seems to be a priority for us?
I would suggest in the course of your budget discussions, we've talked about at the staff level, do we have an annual funding appropriation, you know, CIT for public art?
Right.
Correct.
That would be a city-initiated project similar to the Bear project, or maybe there's matching private funds rates, I'm not saying we would fund the whole thing.
Right.
But our sense was, the mayor and council endorse public art, wanted to see, continue, that wasn't a one-and-done kind of project.
Right, and I couldn't agree more with what our city administrator just said, I'm just, if we're going to use the money for public art, I'd like to make sure that we decide where it's going to be, and I just, that's my concern. I'm a firm believer, I would love to have a separate fund for public art.
Any other comments or questions on the proposal?
I agree with, I agree with Councilman Meister, that it should be part of the budget process, and I still would like to see a proposal to identify downtown in front, and, but I think it should be part of the budget process, even though I support public art in the library as well.
Okay, and Mr. Alshire?
Will this be inside of the library, outside, on the retaining wall?
It'll be outside, I believe.
That's how I understood it, too.
If you go down those big steps, coming from the parking lot, it's, I think, that's where I thought it was, to the left, that big wall that holds the driveway on the side up.
Yeah, I'm not interested, not, I think it's a pretty useless location. I mean, if we're talking about public art, I'm talking about art that you can see from the public streetscape as you pass through the community, and...
And we have many tables up.
This doesn't fit that bill, especially not $5,000 worth, I mean, I'm reading this as a plaque, not...
As a relief.
Like a piece of sculpture, I guess.
Sounds like a relief if you've been down to the World War II memorial.
Right, yeah.
Okay, any other feedback on that?
We're going to have some live minutes.
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Send this in more detail.
And we'll, yeah, we can get some folks in here to answer questions and address some of the concerns raised. Okay. The next item is the proposed revisions to City Code Chapters 60 and 216.
Good afternoon. We made a presentation back in December about street cuts mainly, and how we were administering this, how we were doing the permits, and where we needed to either strengthen or change our requirements to, I guess, end up with a better finished product. And over the past month and a half, staff has worked on this, we've consulted with some other departments, too, and what's presented to you are, I guess, our recommendations for changes that we can make to Chapter 216 and Chapter 260 to address several of these issues. On the street cutting end of things, as we discussed in December, we're doing a couple things. One is, we would recommend going to a bituminous type of patch for these street cuts instead of a concrete patch. We, we think there's some advantages as far as the length of time it'll take to actually get these roads patched, and we think that if they're done properly, they'll give us a finished product that is equivalent to the concrete patch that we use now. It's something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to try and see exactly how, how well the contractors do with this bituminous patching, make sure that they're doing it correctly, but we think that it's worth trying because there are some definite advantages to doing that. Also on the street cuts, as we discussed in December, we're going to change the regulation on how far apart trenches can be before you have to combine them into a single patch or when you have to mill and overlay a street instead of just doing individual patches. Right now, our requirements are, if there are two trenches within 10 feet of each other, or just over 10 feet, you can treat them as individual patches and patch them individually. We're going to change that distance to 75 feet so that, again, the example that always pops up is North Mulberry Street, where you had those, all those lateral service replacements, and you end up with a whole series of trenches running across the street. If we had the 75-foot requirement in there, instead of having those individual trenches, they would have ended up basically milling and overlaying the entire block or blocks that they worked in up there. We're also making some changes to the standard details that go along with the patching, it's the requirements that we have that go along with the permits, and they're attached in your packet. Just trying to clarify that now this bituminous patch is the, is the standard, you still need to follow all the requirements on there, and to some other minor changes to those, those details. The other issue that came up in December that we discussed at least a little bit with the council was the question about the reservation of on-street parking spaces, and it's not so much reservation by getting a permit to reserve parking spaces, it's more the practice where people will put out a trashcan or a lawn chair or something in the street to reserve a space for themselves. And we listened to the council thoughts on this, and then we also had a discussion with the city attorney and with the police department on what would be a way that we could, if this needs to be addressed, what would be the best way to go about it? And the city attorney actually suggested two things. He suggested adding a section to Chapter 60, which is vehicles and traffic in the City Code, that basically says, unless it's a legally parked vehicle or it's permitted by some permit that the city has issued for no parking signs or doing some work in an address, you're not allowed to put anything out in the, in the street to reserve a space.
Just to be clear, we're not talking about an unusual snow event, we're talking like on a routine, regular basis. I mean, obviously, it would be illegal in any case.
Right.
Enforcement, though, we're not talking about.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I can just address that, because we've had comments about that. There are many ordinances in Hagerstown that involve traffic and parking that are enforced on a complaint-driven basis, and this would be one of them. The complaints that came to traffic and parking had absolutely nothing to do with snow, nothing to do with snow. Matter of fact, the last thing it had to do with was snow. And it has to do with folks who live in high-density neighborhoods where there's limited amount of parking, there are people who live there in these places, some of them have three, four, or five cars, and they put out things saying, this is my parking spot, you can't park here. Neighbors have complained and saying, you know, I can't park, it's public parking, and people put things in there, and it's going to cause a problem, and right now, it's not illegal to do it. You call the police, you call somebody, the answer is, sorry, the police generally just move the things, which is fine, but if you start getting neighbors doing that, you start getting into problems. So that's what it's worried about, and people do not need to worry about us getting three feet of snow and the police coming out and ticketing or charging people with putting a chair out there after spending six hours cleaning their spot out.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, since given our present circumstances today.
Yeah, and I think it's very important that you do that, given the complaints we've had, because people think that's what this is about, and that's the last thing this is about.
Right.
And as Councilmember Meister said, the reason we're, we're going to this is there really isn't anything in City Code right now that says that people can't do that, so we needed to, city attorney thought that we needed to add a section into Chapter 60 that ties with another change in Chapter 216, which basically just says, you can only put something out in the street if you have a permit, a street-cutting permit or a construction permit of some kind, or you get a permit to reserve parking spaces legally if you're moving or you're doing something that you need the space on the street. So in those cases, this wouldn't, this provision wouldn't apply, but it's, it's there, I guess, to be used as needed by the, by the police department. And then also attached in your packet is just all of Chapter 216, we went through and made some minor changes, correcting names, updating information, it's been 10 or 15 years, I think, since, since we last went through Chapter 216, and department names have changed and other references, we just went through, they're redlined in there, it's really not substantive changes.
I did not realize that it was illegal for people to put their leaves or grass clippings in the street, because that seems to be quite a common practice.
Yeah, it is. That's another one that new news, it's on the books.
But now, do, in fact, the street sweepers go by and end up sweeping them up, is that...
Well, yeah, because, I mean, you go down many of our streets, they're filled with leaves without people putting them in. I mean, you go down Oak Hill and those, those, but...
But I think that's one of those where it's, you know, not really, it's on the books, but it's not enforced.
It's not enforced, and the ones that are fortunate enough that if you have a big enough area, the street sweeper can come and get, but when you're on a small street, and it's only going to be done ever so often, cars that don't have to be removed.
Right.
This is what happens. This is also why we have the clippings going down into the drains.
Right, that's what it's...
And the people don't care.
I think that's why it's illegal.
Yes, it is, but again, it's not enforced.
It's stormwater, that's what it's about.
Right.
Anyway, I didn't mean to get off on the sidebar on that, and I'll, I'll defer for now the conversation on curbs and sidewalks, because that will be something that we should probably have to take a look at in the future, in terms of me being one of the people who just got a notice to replace my curb and sidewalk, and I'm not saying we need to address this issue because I got the letter that so many people get in the city, but it's just a bad way of doing curb and sidewalk repairs.
What, to get a letter stating that, hey, you don't own it, but you fix it?
Right, yeah.
It's also, it's also been an issue that's been addressed by every mayor and council and every administration since this city has been in existence, including, including we even had an entire task force, the councilwoman, Ashley, came in and formed an entire citizens' task force to look at every option, and they came back and said, what you're doing is what you should do. So we've looked at it every which way, but we're going to look at it again.
Indeed, we shall.
But only on certain streets, right, Mayor?
But I also think we need to look at this idea of abandoned vehicles being used as storage units that are being left on the street, because occasionally, we will get an email from a resident who is dealing with this issue in his neighborhood, and I think it's a real issue, complicated by the fact that in this particular case, they have a permit for a handicap spot, so they have a designated handicap spot, but the vehicle's obviously disabled, it's obviously being used as a storage unit, not as an automobile, and so I think we need to find some way of, I don't know if this is the appropriate chapter in the ordinance, when we're talking about chapters, what is it, 60? Because to me, this is a reservation of a parking space, and it's also abandoned property that's being left along the street here, and I don't know if that, we don't, if we don't even need to change anything, or if it would fall under the category, under these proposed changes, but I think that's an issue that we need to deal with. Just throwing that out there, I don't know what, what staff might think about that.
Could you tell me, because I really don't know, what addresses the person who has a car that needs repaired, and they're working on it, and we've got tires off of it, and we have it jacked up? Is that the legal part of being able to have that? I mean, I, safety-wise, as far as kids or anything else, but is that one that, that's a norm?
I'm pretty sure that's not permitted in the code to do basic car maintenance in the public right-of-way.
I don't know, I'm asking, I mean, I have, there's quite a lot, you know, and they're actually on the street, yeah.
I know there's nothing in Chapter 216 that's been referenced in that.
Yeah. I have one family takes a car apart and puts it back together every week. I have another one that's up on Jack, setting down in the 300 block, I think it is, of North Mulberry, it's been there for three days, and I keep thinking, okay, hope nobody gets caught underneath that. But I'm just asking, you know, I mean, we have a lot of stuff that's on the books, and we really don't know, it's just like the bicycle lane that everybody uses to park, and, again, it's enforcement, that's the sad thing.
I'm sorry to have gone off on a tangent, but the...
We're not.
But the matter in front of us are on the proposed, specific proposed changes. Does anyone have any questions or comments about what's being proposed?
Did you cover the fees? Oh, I'm sorry, that is the other, right, that's probably the thing, I was thinking about the engineering part of it, but, yeah, we're also, what we were proposing is to increase the fees for street cuts, and there's a schedule, marked-up schedule in Chapter 216 that actually shows the proposed increases, and mainly where we're increasing is on streets that are either newly constructed streets or within the first three years of their, it's under Section 21630 in your packet, mainly raising the fees significantly for street cuts on new streets or... Mainly raising the fees significantly for street cuts on new streets or streets that have been, that are fairly new and have been overlaid. Trying to, you know, make a disincentive for people to come in and do cuts on those, those new streets, because we consider those new streets to be a new asset to the city, and we want to, anytime you cut a street, in one way or another, you're degrading it. And we're just trying to minimize the amount of degradation that happens. For the, for the older streets, streets that have, have been there for a while, or they've, it's been a while since they've been overlaid, we're not increasing those fees. We felt that the fees that we had in place were, were reasonable for, for those cases.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How many, I'm assuming that there's a very small number of companies or folks who would be undertaking these street cuts, whether it's, you know, our own utilities or Columbia Gas. Really, I can't think of any other ones besides the gas company. Who else would be making street cuts?
The, as far as number of street-cutting permits that we get, by far the largest number we get during the year are from Columbia Gas, either doing main replacements or doing, putting in new services or abandoning services. I'd say, just off the top of my head, that's probably, they're probably sixty to seventy-five percent of the permits we get. We do get a number of permits from the, from our utility companies, water and sewer, probably more from water, doing service replacements and repairs. And then we do get a handful, a relative handful of other companies that come in to, to do some sort of work, whether it's a fiber-optic company, which may happen once or twice a year, or it may be a private plumbing contractor that has to replace part of someone's service. But by far, the majority is Columbia Gas.
The only reason I ask is that it would be, I think, helpful if we made sure they know about these changes, so that it actually does act as a disincentive for them to do street cuts. And I'm assuming for like emergency, this would still count like in an emergency, like if we had a water main break, or if there's some other, I mean, you've still got to pay the, the fee.
You do. I mean, it's, it, it says in that table, only emergency excavations are allowed in some of these, in a new street. We, we do try to get that appointed across them, and I think that our policy of offering a discount, if they will work with us on streets that they know we're going to overlay, and they get in and do their main replacements and whatnot before we get there with the paving, that, I think, works. Columbia Gas has actually been fairly receptive to that. Over the past couple of years, we've had a meeting usually at the end of the year, and we lay out, "Here's the list of overlay streets for the next year. Please coordinate your schedule with that." So, we have gotten some of the word out, but I think we were waiting to see what the council's feeling was on, on the, all these changes, and then we will, we'll definitely be notifying all the affected parties again.
Those fees are the same ones we saw before, aren't they?
Yes, we have not changed them since December.
Any other questions, or?
Yeah, refresh me again on why we cut the definition of new overlay from five back to three.
It had traditionally been five years, and I'm not sure that I know the, the reason why, but I, at our meeting in December when we discussed this, I don't know if it was Councilmember Metzner or someone made the point that our, or maybe it was, it was Mr. Alshar, that our pavement overlay schedule that we, that we published goes out basically three years. We know what we're doing this year and what we plan to do for the next two years, and I guess the thought was that it made sense to, if you're going to set up a fee schedule and, and charge more for these streets, it would, it makes sense to match it to that schedule, so people can look ahead and know within that three-year timeframe, we need to get in on the street and do that work.
It was a compromise to be business friendly. We're not, because the fee that you're changing it to would be the exact fee that's applied for those two out-years that you're negating now, because the fee is now.
Mr. Munson?
Jim, you put a lot of work into this, so it's generally a good piece of work. But I still have problems with chapter sixty. I raised this issue last time, and I still have problems with chapter sixty. And the reason I have problems with chapter sixty is because I think it's going to create some unnecessary problems for, for the citizens of Hagerstown through no fault of their own. As an example, when the fireworks, when the fireworks are held at the fairground, you can't find a parking place on Vista Street, Vale Street, or any of the surrounding streets. If you happen to live there, and for some reason you have to leave your house for a brief period of time, you're not going to have a parking place when you get back. It makes some sense to put a chair, a barrel, or something there. Now, that's going to happen during the fireworks, that's going to happen during the Blues Fest when it becomes, or not the Blues Fest, the Country Fest, when it becomes successful And it certainly happens with regard to parking for the parade. Can you, can you tell me how many complaints you've had about that kind of an activity, and generally where they are in the city?
I don't know that our department gets as many of those complaints as, as the police department does. I think that they, they end up bearing the, the brunt of those complaints. I know that, as you mentioned, I know that during the Fourth of July celebration out of Fairgrounds Park, there are definitely parking issues in that whole neighborhood, everywhere around there. And certainly with the Mummer's Parade, throughout its whole route, it's, it's very disruptive, not only to traffic moving through, but also parking in that, you know, along that whole route as well. As far as numbers, though, I, probably we're not the department that, that feels most of those.
Well, and, and I know what Lou said, and I generally agree with it. Police certainly have more important things to attend to than a chair in the street. But I, I would like to, I'd just go on record, and I want it, want it in the minutes, the chief's sitting back there, and I just want to simply say that I hope, and I've made the decision, I am going to vote for this, because in the main, it's a good piece of work, the whole thing. But I hope that the police will, I hope and expect that the police will, with, with use of moderation and common sense, in, in these cases where things are set to preserve parking places, except in the instance where it's continually repeating. If somebody's doing it continuously, then they don't have to use moderation or common sense. But if it's an occasional thing, I hope the police will look at it in that way.
I would also suggest, I'm sure the chief is already aware, that this would be a good, you know, for these recurring circumstances in these particular neighborhoods where it's a persistent problem, it would also be ripe for mediation, where you could get the folks who live in a building or on a block to try to work out some agreement, so that it's not just this battle of chairs and trashcans and having to suck up police, valuable police time, to resolve these issues, where it could be a ripe referral for mediation. I, I would just offer that as also an alternative to constant police.
I would just comment, I know that when they offered off-street parking, it certainly did benefit our end of town. And with the fairgrounds, there's not, I mean, the people that live there on Mulberry, they know, "Hey, if I want a parking place, I'm going to put my car there, and that's where it's going to stay. We have no problem as far as people putting chairs or anything else out, because they all know that it's going to happen."
Well, that's true, except in the case that you might have to go to the drugstore upon a sudden.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, the advantage is, is that we do have off-street parking, and that was the benefit that the city offered us, so.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns on this particular item?
I would only note this, so far, we haven't had a single complaint that all the people that the police have arrested for breaking our curfew that we passed. And I think this is going to be another example of what we're not going to hear. And if we do, we'll change them all.
It's just another tool in the toolbox.
You got it.
Right.
So, there'll actually be two separate ordinances, one for amending chapter sixty and one for amending chapter two sixteen, that we'll put in the packet next week.
Sounds like a plan. All right. Let's talk about the watershed.
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Yeah.
The, the quick synopsis, you know, it's somewhat lengthy, but we've got it down to bulleted points. Let me talk about the Edgemont Reservoir first. It is a one-hundred-and-thirteen-year-old structure, and like the former West End Reservoir, it requires a lot of maintenance, a lot of administrative time on it. It was last, reworked in nineteen ninety-three. We did some major work in, on the spillway and on the intake tower. In two thousand and six, we noticed, and we self-report all these issues to MDE as we monitor the situation, some issues at the toe jammed under the spillway. We addressed those in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. That was completed. Two thousand and thirteen, late, we realized we have some more issues at the toe. We have some seepage there. We met with MDE, Nancy, Bruce, and I, we all had a lengthy meeting, and we've had discussions and meetings with MDE since that time. At some point in time, we're going to enter into a consent agreement between MDE and the city in order to address these issues. We do keep the reservoir level six feet below normal to keep the head pressure down, to keep the leaks at a minimum. Last fall, last winter, you all approved Triad Engineering to come in and do an engineering study on what we need to do to remediate the issues at that location. And I did make one mistake in my, in my memo. In spring of this year, in May, they're going to complete the engineering portion of the process. We won't complete the actual repair process, it's just the engineering at that time. We'll get some information back on it. Some of our discussion has centered around, no, what, what are our options at that point with the reservoir? We don't want to continue to spend one or two million dollars on it every few years to keep this up, should we move forward, look at another source of supply, which would be well-water supply. That'll be at the Brechner Plant. If we so choose to go with that source, but breaching the dam may be the alternative for us, and return that to its natural state. We'll have some more engineering studies and bring that back to council, but it's just some, some items to think about on that. At the Brechner Plant, we do have to bring it up to meet regulatory requirements for that. We're completing our chloramination project at R.C. Wilson, Nancy and I and others are going to MDE tomorrow to have some further discussions as we move through that process. The, the actual plant work is, is basically ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent complete, so it's the testing as we move forward to get our regulatory approval that we need to have at that location at Wilson. Once again, chloramination will have to occur. We do have three-point-two million dollars budgeted over the next few years for that to occur. Nancy has completed our initial request, MDE, for funding for sources, no matter which way we choose to go with this process, so we do have that much of the work completed. For us, as a discussion, staff has spent a lot of time, you know, in meetings, and funny to bring it to you guys, to, to really think about, for us, what do we want to see for the long term, thinking out fifty, seventy, eighty years, like they did with the initial work that was done on the reservoir, and of course, up on the West End, too. We've, you know, made great strides with the completion we've done over the last ten years to bring the water system up. We did utilize the Brechner Plant as a backup source in January when we had our transmission main break, so, you know, even between us, it's a peace-of-mind thing. We're kind of at a debate, and even between the staff level, is it something we need? Is it something we can do without? My personal feeling is, I think we do need it as a backup. It is expensive to have. As you can see, we spent six-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars on the facility since twenty-eleven, and we really utilized at that point maybe a dozen or eighteen times to bring water. But when you need water from it, we have it there to, to supplement the system.
We need the dam, or we need the treatment plant?
Treatment plant.
Treatment plant.
Yes. That's correct.
And so, the, the question is whether there's water under the ground that would also be enough to supply that treatment plant?
Correct.
That's an unknown.
We would do a study, yes, we would do a study. There's, there's, the aquifer depth there may be, you know, four hundred, six hundred, eight hundred, a thousand feet. There was a well system in Smithsburg at one point in time, which is down below that, that supplied a major source of water. So, just our discussions with Triad, we think it's, it's a valued option to look at, and it may be viable for us.
But we just don't need the reservoir, perhaps?
We would not need the reservoir anymore, and that's where, you know, I put some, a few items in here that we've discussed about, if we don't need the reservoir, do we need to own one thousand three hundred acres approximately of watershed property? So, we could conceivably sell off that property, offset our costs for what we need to do with the engineering and some of the processes at that point. We would want to keep the properties that we own. We have a long-term agreement with the National Parks Service for the Appalachian Trail, which we received eight-hundred-thousand-dollar one-time payment. So, we would keep that buffer zone and continue to own all that property, but we have a patchwork of property. The biggest group's about eight-hundred acres together. Everything else is kind of spread out over there, so true property values are down, but it's timber value on the properties, and there's building properties, hunting rights, so it's something that we would look at to see what, you know, we can get back for us as a capital investment to sell that property.
MDE also mentioned that if the most viable option to breach the reservoir and restore the watershed, that there may be a fair amount of grant, grant money out there for that work that seems to be, I would say, a somewhat popular thing to, to do these days. So, it, it's possible. I don't know what the, you know, what the likelihood is, but we would certainly pursue, if, if removing the reservoir became the, the most, the best way to go, we would certainly pursue grant funding to do that for remediation.
Operating a, a water system just on the other side of the ridge and, and working in at least one of the jurisdictions and doing some plans for others, the two things are obvious. One is groundwater is not as predictable as surface water.
Correct.
Far none, it's never as predictable. It's hard to find, it's hard to determine its, its stability over the long haul, and the second, the second is, the state isn't doling out more. In other words, if the inclination is that we give up this reservoir and this watershed, and the state is going to give us a bunch of water that we find under the ground, they're going to do their calculation and say, "So much rain falls on the ground," and based on that, your, your ownership within this watershed, and I understand, I guess, a little where this memo is headed, but to me, this reservoir is a goose in the hand. It just is, there, there is no way I would ever, ever give up known water allocation and source, especially on a surface level, back to the state. I, there's, there's just, I, I would fight and argue that tooth and nail.
That's why we're here, we're going to do a cost-benefit analysis on this, for what it shows. It may be cheaper for us.
I mean, I watched Frederick City, Frederick County, I mean, there are, they were envious as they spent forty-five million dollars to build their own system to the Potomac, a source in which the state has continually said to jurisdictions further and further up that line, "Hey, you know, you need to watch how much you're taking out of the Potomac, how much you're taking from this surface water source." And I just, there, there's not, there's not any amount of money in the book that would, that would sway me savings-wise to give up a known surface water source. It just, it just isn't.
What I think is highly ironic about this is that in nineteen oh-two, when they had this idea, and they, they went forward with this, our, these forefathers of ours had a great vision for the city of Hagerstown as a growing metropolis. But the irony is, we had no annexation policy for decades and decades and decades, even though we had such visionary forefathers, to allow us to benefit from the growth of our city, and especially with the water system, and that we're still in a situation where we're trying to catch up economically to all the past growth that we never benefited from in terms of our tax base. So, I agree with Councilmember Alshar that this is a huge hidden value, even though it has costs as well. It offers a huge value to the city and its ability to grow into the future, and I think we have to keep that long view of things when we consider this particular... And I think we have to keep that long view of things when we consider this particular issue.
And understand when you sell off, if you sell off, property that you own within a specific aquifer, let's say, this location being the case, you lose your, authority is not the right word, but you lose your ability to sort of claim, if you will, that piece of property as a piece of your aquifer from which to draw from. Whoever gets that, I don't care if they put a single house on it, an eight acre, 12 acre piece of ground, they get the 12 acres worth of allocation associated with that specific piece of property based on a rain calculation that MDE comes up with.
It would behoove us, based on what happened in Boonsborough and other places, that if we did this, the guaranteed amount of draw from the aquifer would be from the state irrevocable or else.
And at early discussions.
But that would be a key part of any dam breaking.
Right.
Well, that you don't apply for it later, that it's in the paperwork from the get-go. You have drawing rights.
You re-up that permit, the state re-ups that permit with you every 10 years. And it's up to their decision on that every 10-year schedule to determine whether or not your allocation is.
Well, again, I'm trying to say that we have a contract with the state that's outside of that 10-year thing, or I couldn't see doing it.
Yes, sir.
It would need to be, and that's the regulations for regular property. But this would be part of a bigger deal and that would have to be part of the deal, it seems to me.
When we went through the allocation process the last time, the state reduced us from 4.5 million per day to 750,000 per day with a peak day of 4.5 million. And so we do have that allocation process that you do have to go through, both on the Potomac supply as well as the mountain supply, the Edgemont supply. You know, there's a lot of variables. The other thing is we have a surface water treatment plant. We don't have a groundwater treatment plant. The treatment process is different. So part of your, you have your hydrologic study to look at it, to look to see if you even have a supply, but then you have to look at the cost benefit.
When it comes to water resources in MDE, I feel like that commercial, you know, if the insurance company is saying you don't need a lawyer, you need a lawyer. They're saying you don't need the water source, you need the water source.
We understand, we live daily.
We do.
When do you think we might have this cost benefit analysis?
Triad, depending on what the weather conditions are, Triad plans to complete the study in May of this year. And then there'll be a report that follows that with recommendations and some engineering costs. So at that point in time, we would come back to mayor and council to see, you know, based on those recommendations moving forward, to see if the mayor and council would want to entertain a hydrologic study to look at a groundwater supply or if they, you know, what your thoughts are moving forward with whatever the recommendations are, whether, you know, be remediation or, you know, maybe several different ways to remediate.
Whatever decision we make, MDE has typically partnered in a consent agreement. So we'll be a major player in that for whichever way we so choose. We'll just have time constraints placed on us and milestones when we have to complete certain aspects of it, so.
And right now, we're, you know, we're in compliance with the requirements. We maintain the reservoir at a reduced elevation, which keeps the seep, you know, at either, you know, very low flow or no flow at all from it. We have a monitoring program in place, both with city staff and with Triad Engineering. So MDE is generally satisfied with the direction we're going and they're not, we can't, we can't stop moving forward, but they're not leaning on us. We are moving in the direction they, you know, they want to see, it's the study and so forth.
One last question. Did you notice the very minor breach in the toe before the dredging project?
The current seep started in December of 2013.
Was, did seepage exist within the structure before the dredging project?
The dredging was in 93. And the seep, for us, the last, what our addressing of the seep was '06 is when we noticed. And it's in the upper, where the shallow part of the reservoir, it's not in the deep end. It's in the, you know, 20-foot range elevation-wise. It's not in the 140-foot range is where it's at. So it's in the high end is where the initial seep was.
And this seep is, of course, at the other end.
This is the, this is the low end, the one we're monitoring now.
And there's, you know, we know there's seepage underneath the spillway and we know there's been a little bit of movement of the concrete wall associated with the spillway. We did this, we completed this study in the, in the 2007 timeframe. We made the required repairs in the 2010 timeframe. Essentially what we're doing now is we're repeating the study that was done in the 2007 time period to see if there's any significant difference or change in what was found at that time. And that's really what will drive the recommendations. Has everything stayed pretty much the same or has it gotten significantly worse? And then we'll kind of go from there. We'll have a subsurface map of essentially of water movement under the spillway and in that area when the study is complete.
So one thing for sure, we'll have multimillion-dollar projects in both locations. I mean, that's, that'll be the given for us and then we'll address it when we come back to council for what might be our best route to your satisfaction. We'll be back then and probably in June at some time and give you some update and give us some guidance on which way we need to go.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Let me just, maybe comment one. At some point, Washington County is going to grow. It's just waiting to happen and it's going to happen. So obviously, the demands for water are going to increase dramatically. And because of that, I have to say that I think Kristin is probably absolutely right. We're going to have less control over our future as a consequence of growth than we might have if we breach the dam. And I know that's not what this is all about. I understand this is about a study. But I think it's a serious matter and one hopes that the state would be very generous to us in trying to repair that dam and keep it repaired.
10 seconds then, plug for Wilson. You know, Wilson was built to average 20 million gallon per day. We're currently averaging about 12. We're permitted for 15. Once you reach 80% of the threshold of your average daily production, then we have to go back and ask for a permit increase. We're not quite there yet. We're permitted for 15 million gallons a day. And we hit some 14, 14.2 days.
Yeah, peak days.
Peak days, but our average is about 12. So at some point in time, within the next few years, we'll be going back and requesting a reappraisal there also.
If your capacity is 20.
The capacity of the facility is 20. That is correct.
But we have a 15, 18 allocation right now.
I understand.
Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Last but not least, we have an update on the Hamilton Hotel, Dagmar Hotel and Alexander House.
Evening. Started some handouts.
Thank you. Can we get one for Donna?
In this, I have one question. Why didn't we look at the Clonan Hotel too?
Not sure.
Just thought I'd bring it up. Clonan Hotel.
Which, and that is the one caddic cornered from the library?
Yes, this is an introductory discussion on three unique large structures we have in our downtown. As staff work to implement mayor and council's goals and priorities for the community city center plan, priorities and goals set forth in the neighborhood's vision by the mayor and council. We're looking at opportunities and challenges to carrying out those plans. And we obviously are aware of these three properties as being unique challenges due to their size and location. And for us to create a sustainable downtown and offset some of the issues we have here, we wanted to at least have a starting point and an initial point of discussion on these three properties, mainly provide an update to the mayor and council on some of the current conditions and the status of these properties. And in the handout for each property, you'll notice there is some detailed information. I'm not going to go through everything, but the information provided discusses the square footage at each property, discusses the number of units at each property, talks about some of the enforcement of the community standards and code issues at the properties. It also talks about calls for service and things of that nature. And just to do a brief run-through on each property, the three properties identified in the handout are the Hamilton Hotel at 9298 West Washington Street. The property, I believe, is about 57,000 square feet. It's been vacant for quite some time. It's been undergoing renovations, I guess, at least the renovations were started, I believe, in 2010 or 2011. And then due to various issues, those renovations have stalled. I know our planning and code administration staff have been working with the tools that they have and the property, I know, has been through the court system multiple times, but I believe in that scenario, the property is, the property owners have been granted extensions through the court system when it has come to the enforcement efforts there. When it comes to the Dagmar Hotel, College Hall and St. Charles Apartments located at Summit Avenue and West Antietam Street, we have another property that's occupied with 101 rooming units, 30 hotel rooms and 12 apartments. And I know there are some ongoing code issues there that are, continue to be addressed by our code enforcement staff. And looking at the Alexander House located at 7 East Washington Street, not as many code issues at this property. I believe since the new ownership has taken over, I think we've had fewer concerns there. But I think what we want to recognize is you have such a large building in our downtown with 96 apartments that are subsidized. So looking at the Dagmar and the Alexander House, which are occupied and the existing concentration of poverty we have there and just making, making sure that as we work to implement the goals of the city center plan and the goals of the mayor and council, this is a starting point to discuss how are we going to offset those challenges, so.
Is the 100,000 upper floor renovation for the Hamilton Hotel, is that, is that subject to these extensions?
That, I believe, was, as we have listed here, February 2nd of 2011 was a $100,000 upper floor loan that was made at the time. And it was $100,000. It is a mortgage that is held against the property, but I believe the position of the mortgage is behind multiple.
So we don't have the ability to pull that back? We don't have the ability to take the 100 grand back?
We could foreclose, but the likelihood of getting that back would be minimal.
That's crazy.
So once again, I didn't go over every detail that's listed in the packet. I think our goal tonight was to say, we obviously recognize that these properties present their own unique challenges and we wanted to have this as a starting point to discuss how we address those challenges. And if there's additional information that we can obtain and come back at a later date, we can do that as well. Or if there's questions that need to be answered or additional information that could be presented.
The one at the Alexander House, I mean, they're taking the ownership and I'll be happy to eat crow and that, the guy's sort of doing what he said he would do. If I were the guy at the Dagmar, beyond being behind, you know, in some utility billing, I'd be asking, you know, why am I on the list when this one next to me, between me and the courthouse is in shambles? Which I think is the same owner as the Hamilton, right? Doesn't that party own both of them?
Are you talking about adjacent to the Dagmar?
Yeah, the one between.
That's the St. Charles Apartments.
Okay, I think you're maybe talking about the, is it the tri-state building?
I don't know, it's got.
Oh, the Shockey Building.
The vacant.
Yeah, it's got some bad awnings.
The one who owns the, right, the one who owns the Hamilton has got the Shockey Building.
Yes.
And I think tonight, we recognize they're obviously different properties. I think this was looking, we didn't include the Colonial.
I still would, yeah, because the Colonial, I've heard negative on that and I have for some time, so I'd like for that to be included.
Yeah, if you could do the same kind of breakdown, that's a good point.
I mean, I'd like to know how many.
I don't know how many units are in there or.
I think the benefit that we'll get out of an exercise like this is if we break them into two categories. And I only say this, that we have buildings downtown that people are owning into insolvency and complete negligence. And then we have buildings that are owned and occupied in subsidized housing. And I'll take a housing structure like the Alexander House where somebody's going to come in and, and I don't care that it's subsidized housing as long as it's complying and paying the bills and it's operating, you know, okay, within the community over a place like the Shockey Building and the Hamilton any day of the week. So I see them as two different issues. One are the derelict buildings that are vacant, that the chief will probably tell us he has vagrants going in and out of and, you know.
Where the water pipes burst and flood into neighboring properties.
Who cares, let the water run. I think those are one set of buildings. And it is a great exercise to look at them in that framework and say, what can we do to address those issues associated with those buildings? And I think a second category are, what are we going to do about owners that own buildings into derelict condition that don't provide, of the larger structure that don't provide what we believe is probably a minimum reasonable oversight the way that the gentleman from the Alexander House is doing.
Right.
And those, I think, are two categories. I think you sit down and, like you point out, there, you know, there's probably a dozen of them downtown. They probably both, of that dozen, they probably both fit in one of those two categories and you come up with measures to address them.
Yes, good idea.
So, can I just ask a question? I don't know, has it been determined whether or not the Dagmar is paying hotel motel tax on their supposedly 30 hotel rooms?
I am not sure of that question.
I think that's a question that came out of our meeting with them. I'd certainly like to know if that's happening. I do think it's interesting when you look at the calls for service as well.
For facing fire.
Yes, I think that's another notable category when it comes to the, sort of the cost that some of these properties have on the city taxpayers.
Well, in pointing that out, it's funny, you look at the Alexander House assessed at 3 million? And then you flip the page to the Hamilton Hotels, Hamilton Hotels assessed at 389,000. We've got houses, you know, in some parts of the city that are assessed more than at 389,000. That, to me, was an interesting figure. Dagmar's 2 million.
Any other comments or, I just, I think it's nice that the staff updated us on this and I think it'll be an ongoing conversation that we have about how to address some of these major properties in downtown so we can get them repositioned for being more positive contributions to our landscape.
Once again, I agree with the triage approach. I think that's a good idea, I've always said that. But I also, you know, we also have complained and complained to staff and looking for solutions about buildings that are full of concentrations of one income or subsidized or other issue type of occupants. So, you know, those are these buildings. So, you know, we have complained about them and we've wanted to find ways to address that. And I think every member of this council has said that. So I think the first thing is making sure that they're well reasonably run and reasonably well maintained, but then can we get a more balanced occupancy is, I think, something we are concerned about.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, thanks. That leads us to city administrators' comments.
Just one, which is next Tuesday, the 24th. We have a mid-year FY15 budget work session. Wanted to confirm the starting time. Do we want to say 5 o'clock on that? Did we pin that down?
I don't know if we did pin that down. Does 5 o'clock work for everybody? Is it a Tuesday? It is a Tuesday.
7 o'clock regular meeting, so.
How much time do you need first?
Yeah, I was going to say, it won't take two hours. I mean, maybe an hour, depending on the questions or discussions. So if you wanted to do it at 6, that's why I'm kind of asking. Do you want to come in and have a break afterwards or do you want to just come in at?
Let's do 6. It should be a short meeting. Yeah.
I'm fine with that. Okay.
And we may do the setup since it's at 6 where you're up here, just because.
Yeah, sure.
The equipment, so that's okay. That's it for me.
Thank you. Council comments, Mr. Metzner. Mr. Metzner.
The only comment I have for tonight is this Sunday is the Potter's Bowl, which is a fundraiser for the Community Free Clinic.
Are there still tickets available?
There are still tickets for all those out there.
Can you reserve one for me?
Yes, I have a ticket I can, who were concerned about how tight quarters things were last year. The venue has been changed back to the Elk's Club out in Robinwood. And that is one of the reasons there's tickets available, is because it's a larger venue. And anybody who needs tickets, please call the Community Free Clinic. I don't know, I'm going to have to find out, Mayor. I'll find out though. My wife is like, I'm living with 300 bowls and gallons of soup and everything else, so believe me, and that's, that's it for me tonight.
All right, thanks. Ms. Nye?
I just need an update on the BEAC Company because I understand that they had pipes that had burst and that would have been yesterday. So, and I really didn't have a chance to call Eric because everybody at the city, of course, was off and I was hoping that somebody was able to get a hold of because they did call the police department, so. Also, I had a phone call from a commissioner and he wanted to know that the gentleman that lives on Hager Street, if we have in fact answered his complaints. I think he is stretching out now to the commissioners.
He's been doing that.
And I said, I said, well, you know what? To, to my knowledge, I said, I feel that he has been answered and I said, I think that now you are the next link. And he said, well, Councilwoman Nye, then I will tell him that you really don't want to feel like listening to his problem. I said, I didn't say that. I said, his, his questions are being answered. They, he now is going to the county commissioner.
We have listened.
I feel that the police department as well as code and everybody else has done what they've needed to do. So other than for the gentleman to show up here in council chambers, I don't know what else to tell him.
When I do, this is what I brought up before about abandoned vehicles on the street being used as storage units. That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Yes, and that's what I thought.
I've been to his house, I've, I've talked with him and his.
And I knew that Kristin had.
Neighbors.
Didn't do anything horribly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's a serious issue.
So, but I did, I did want to pass it forward that, you know, he has, you know, he now has reached out to the commissioners and that's fine, so.
Well, and if I was that particular county commissioner, I might just defer back to the local government that's in charge of.
Well, but that's what he did. He sent it back, okay? So I'm just letting you know. And also Columbia Gas, for another third time on the street, has now gone up and made another cut on Mulberry. And that, I found out, is only to go in and disconnect now the service. So if you do not want service any longer, then the gas company comes and they do another cut out. So we have another cut in the street. It just keeps going on and on.
Trying to beat the organs.
Yeah, well, you know, but anyway. And trash just continues to take a hold on the city, so. Donna will agree with me. We just continue to go around the city and see trash.
Mr. Alshar, I know you have to go.
I do. I only have one comment. I meant to make that last week. If you've been out along Garland Grove Boulevard, I don't know whose responsibility that is.
I was just out there yesterday. We need some prisoners out there to do some cleanup.
Looks like the fence at 40 West Landville.
Yeah. I'm sure the big windstorm of last week did not help, but it's pretty atrocious.
But I told you all, if you go down to the prisons, okay?
It's bad.
They have them. I understand that the sheriff's department, they have to have supervision and we cannot supervise them. But I think with the prisons, I think that they have their own supervision. So it would be nice to have somebody to come in and take care of some of the mess that we've got.
It's not the shopping center's responsibility?
No.
We've done it through Public Works, through crews.
Yeah, no, it's not the shopping center.
It's very ugly.
Is this public?
It's, it's embarrassing.
Is that part of it?
It's very ugly.
No, wait a minute, Garland Grove, no, 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 no. Well, the one where those.
All right, thank you. Mr. Munsen.
Very quickly, I just do, I'd like to thank the city employees for all the good work they've done to assist city residents through the weather of the last couple of weeks. We've had some bad weather and they've really stepped up and, and helped out. And that goes to Public Works, Parks Department, Police Department, everybody.
Thank you.
The unveiling of the new improved Maryland Theater last Thursday night, that was great. New seats, all kinds of refurbishment, new sound system, various other improvements. And on Sunday, got to enjoy the improvements at the Maryland Symphony, which was a great performance. They even managed to have a children's band from all around, worked into a modern, a new symphonic work. It's great that that kind of thing is happening in our community, both the theater and the orchestra.
Thanks, I just, oh, sure.
Lou, I got two tickets Sunday. One of the best events, events around.
Yes.
I, I also went to the Maryland Theater seat unveiling and it was great. I missed the symphony though, unfortunately I didn't make that. I also attended the five-year anniversary celebration for Pastor Ricky Smith, the Zion Baptist Church, very well-attended. Delegate Wilson was also there. And then following that, went to the installation and the, the induction of a new church in the United Church of Christ, the Veritas United Church of Christ, which is operating out of the Mulberry lofts. And just going to both those services kind of reinforced to me that even though there might be a common faith shared by those people, it's, it also reinforces to me the value of diversity in our community and just wanted to put that out there. So I appreciate them inviting me to their services and, you know, one of these days I might go to try to go to every church in the city just to experience at least one of their services, so. Anyway, if there's nothing else, then we will be adjourned. Thanks.